Hey. Okay, good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting to order of the committee of the whole community development of November sixth, twenty twenty three. We have a quite a slew of people here from various delegations and, you know, it would be, we'll just go through the delegations at that point. We also have media representation here. So welcome to the beacon as well and some people, some members of, of our town. It's like, wow, good to see you guys tonight. And I will point out, by the way, that there is a little bit of refreshments at the back there in the kitchen. Feel free to grab something as you're there. If you're famished at all, these meetings can go along over this one. You never know what happens. We have some delegations. So, so I guess I'd like to call it order. I would like to talk about approval of the agenda. We were planning earlier on doing a special announcement at six fifteen, but time got away from us unfortunately. So we need to add a fourth delegation, which will be actually is the number one slot for Alantara. They're here to talk to us about property in the industrial park that we've just closed on together. So, we'd like to have that added as the fourth delegation, but call it A as opposed to D. Okay, any other changes to the agenda? So it's gonna be five, so this will be five A and then the digital service line will be five B, C, B. Okay, so. Okay, and Joe, do you have anything you'd like to change? Sorry.
Can you hear me? Hello?
No. Okay, so nothing there then? So, okay, so let's call for a vote on the approval of the agenda as amended. All in favor? I think you need to move last. Oh, sorry. I have a mover or a second?
Go second.
Go second. Gotcha. Okay, all in favor? Okay, there we go. All right, moving on to number three, disclosure of pecuniary interest or conflict of interest and the general nature thereof. Does anybody have anything on? Nope, I think we're okay. Perfect. And I have nothing, so that's good. All right. Business arising from the previous committee minutes. And if any. Sure. Anything from you on business horizon? Okay, good. All right. So now moving on to delegations and presentations. So A is going to be from Alantara to talk about the, the property in the industrial, industrial park as well as after we finish with their delegation, we are going to have a quick little pause to, to take a photo with them as well and take care of that part of the business. So thank you very much. All right. All right, perfect.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to make presentation and the opportunity to establish our business in your, in your municipality. We thought this will be Matt Cruz's well location that we've, are, have established or been publicly established in the form of, it's building us going to be, eighteen thousand, four hundred thirty. And the objective is to, open that access and the distribution and maintenance facility for our four businesses, which is, office patters, modular buildings and the building is being designed so that we have the ability to think on, if and all, kind of mind projects in these facilities. It will be in the form of train speeds or colleges, kids. Any sort of modular, modular building that you can open shop and transport out of, out of the road could also build wall panels, floor panels or wood frame, hardware buildings that help speed up where. I'm Marcus Commandant, this is President Page. And we're the one running here. And we also have been, we have, we have, we have, right on the news.
So we've actually been around since around nineteen eighty one from France, Eastern Canada, and well established in the American Canada region. And there's a focus trying to help develop communities as well as improve our business. So here you can see in the map that shows applications that we have for, for our physical units and included on that would be the future area of Charles County area. Here you can see just a couple of elevating drawings of our shop. It'll have three main different days as well as one for inventory allocation. So as Marcus said earlier, there's the original fleet, we have a wide variety of models that we produce. It's Australia's, London's, Walkrooms, shower walkrooms, heat storage, all base trailers, as well as we work. There are videos are regarding some power. Hi, it's Mark Gordon. So the other part of this is the custom modular design. So basically we have great modules in our chemical facilities and recovery space as well as heat projects on time and moving as fast as possible. And it also allows us onsite to get buildings watered faster quickly. So that way there's no way for a day to compare to a state built alternatives. And it's like Mark said, well, a wide variety of applications, hotels, apartments, camps, colleges, so all that. So we also have a few videos that kind of goes through as well.
So we're not seeing a video on our side here, but I guess it's just, yeah. So we hired us on, but this is the PowerPoint. I think that's the PowerPoint, right? And PowerPoint, which was one screen. Ghosts.
Here and everything still on. Zoom is on my screen, all of that is. Yeah.
Yeah. Spreading around. Good stuff. Meeting adjourned. Yeah. And now we get some recordings of us stop as well then? Six forty five. The record. Break here to say.
Hey, can you guys hear me? Are you miming the meeting?
Are we? Sorry?
We can hear you.
We can hear you, Joe.
Awesome. Are you miming the meeting?
Why you can't hear us?
Not very well, no. What's going on there?
We're just having some technical difficulties. We're all enjoying cookies. Yeah. You could have did.
Joe, can you be the electric for email again?
Have you given up or are you good? Oh, okay. Oh, yeah. And we apologize. We're in our temporary location currently and we don't have actual tech. And so we're hoping to get back to that soon, but I think it's not as going to be as soon as we want, but. Very conservative.
Don't worry. Yeah, I guess as I said earlier, coming back to being part of this is the custom modular builds. We have a variety of ranges and options with that. So, we have a few of our top projects that kind of highlight a few of our different lines of business. So, particularly as a bunkhouse, the custom units, colleges, well as the non-mockable.
But sorry, just one, right? What is that? Is that sort of a bunkhouse? Is that what you said? That's. Oh, yeah.
So we, we build in, present on this all individually to, to be for, who, uh, company to be agricultural for business and or we could join them all together, create a series when we gather and use them for mining. But our photo is the office building that we, that we built for a company that operated.
All right. You guys, that's it? You want to talk more? Or that's, I guess the video is going to say all of this. That's perfect. Well, we're just going to get to that as well. I'm sure that we'll have some questions for you as well. I know I need, but Mr. Mayor, do you have any questions? I don't have any questions. Yeah. Okay.
I guess I have one. When you, when you say you do these buildings and panels, do you do them complete, like the plumbing in the electrical or is it, or you just do the shelf? And the other contractor is responsible for it?
Okay, the ones are, ones are open shop. We, we do ninety percent of the electrical on that. And there's just, once it gets to the site, there's some connection that you play on site.
Right.
Service. And the panelized portion of our business, we basically just send the wall, walls and doors and there's, once they're from the site and then local traders would be,
Good. Thank you.
That's great. And, and anyway, it was just, it was so neat to see how all these things were arriving and just putting the, putting the walls up as they were getting off the truck, truck basically. So, and I guess my question would be a little vague, but so, you know, can you guys build it faster as well because you're building under controlled circumstance? Or is it just that you do it out so that you can get the building closed up quicker? What's the, what's the main, the, the main, the main advantage, I guess, if you will?
Yeah, you can build it, you know, faster in the shop. You know, you've got framing tables and equipment to move materials in the bottom and also, it, it speeds up production on site as well because while let's say the foundation going, we're also working on portions of the building to have a raise. So, you know, whenever they don't have to start a new, a new building, you know, it's kind of, that's all. Probably the most. I guess a couple of examples would be that. The video of the, 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 thirty seven, three stories around the building that, you know, that building got raining and. You know, it's definitely speaking of something, finding why there, I think, I think there was a, a eighteen year old suspension, he was standing out maybe in February, one, the war and the, during the pandemic, they had to send him to the mission. And that, that was everybody not coming back. So you only did a eighty room. Turned over, I guess, maybe, maybe even a little bit, a little bit, and we got, that was later. They'll be putting fire, sign up buildings.
And then the only other which I had is so you're planning to be able to build everything out of, out of this building here as well in township? Or is it, you know, specialize in certain things or?
Yeah, the main, the main, the primary focus in this would be the, for a busy group of people, so our, our goods are relevant to the contractor, the various people. But it's got to be, it's going to be large and also the necessity going to keep on and build various projects that does, you know, as we share projects, I guess.
Right. I mean, specialty projects that you would.
Legal homes or, the law family business. It is the people.
Thank you very much. That's great. Any other questions? Not unless Joe has been. Yeah, right. I don't see Joe. I wrote down Joe with a big arrow this way. Hey, Joe, can you hear us okay though?
Can you hear me?
Yes, perfectly. Yeah. Yeah. Got any questions, Joe? Sure. Sorry, councilor tell?
No, no, sir, I don't.
Perfect. Okay. No problem. All right. Thanks a lot, guys. So why don't we take a pause? They don't have to call the pause or anything or just, this is part of the meeting. I want to say welcome. So yeah, so if I can, you know, if I can stand and actually hear that, that would be appreciated. And then we can take five minute pause for a picture.
So, so first I just want to say welcome to, on behalf of council and in our staff, I can say that, you know, we're thrilled to finally, you know, be here with you today to announce, you know, an exciting addition that, that will round out, you know, our thriving industrial partner. I believe that it, it will help position Edwardsburg Cardinal and, and really with what you've said tonight, you know, the greater Leeds and Grandville area for, you know, greater growth. The addition of Alantara Leasing, we not only help, I believe, the future success for Edwardsburg Cardinal, but I think that we're, we really are helping open doors for development across Leeds, Grandville. We were out, I think it was the one fifty anniversary at HFI recently, right? And we noticed that there were several Alantara mobile offices in, in the parking lot there, helping HFI during their expansion and their new builds. You know, there's no doubt that having a partner like the Launtra and our industrial park will help create more economic opportunities, attract future investments for our area and foster greater economic possibilities in, in all of Eastern Ontario. We know as our council that Edwardsburg Cardinal is, our location makes us an ideal strategic location for businesses to, to come that are, they're looking for establishment of, of a strong presence in Ontario. This, this is a great place to do that. Our proximity to major transportation routes and our access to a talented workforce, they help to create an environment that's conducive to long-term success. And that's exactly what, what we wish for, for Alantara Leasing and our partnership with Edwardsburg Cardinal is nothing but long-term success. So, so Marcus, Trevor, Ron and Doug and all of your team at Alantara, welcome Edwardsburg Cardinal.
Welcome, welcome. Big beers for all the meaning folks, three days. I remember this. Just make sure while we're taking picture, make sure you tell us. When I move up and if you're right and on. So everybody look and smile and make the best smile in the face. Thank you so much.
Could be your first customer, mate.
Okay, so all right. So probably, what's that, sir? I think she may have to start recording again. Were you going to say, are we recording? I think we're still recording, but I can't. Oh, we're still recording? So we're good, we're good to go now. Okay. So again, I'd like to thank people from Alantara for coming out. They did actually leave from the east coast of Canada earlier today to get here. So it was a big, big thing to do again. Truly appreciate that effort. So. Yep. Perfect. Okay. So moving on to number five B then, we have digital service line progress update from Taylor Prosser. Welcome, Taylor. How are you doing, sir?
Good, good luck, Taylor.
We're hoping you have the skills that a guy will.
We probably should have asked him earlier.
All right, same with Brown here tonight. My name is Taylor Proctor. I am a good financial coordinator for this central area. So basically.
Yeah, it's okay.
I go around and serve. I'm a bricklayer available. I've got, and I got the talent in, in helping bring the program to the brand, the, from digital. So potentially tonight, I'm just going to talk about digital mainstream, the brands that they offer and programs. As well as take a dive into the numbers of the brand and programs in the central area. And then take a deep dive into the talent of the group of firms. So to start, digital mainstream was created in Toronto. They've gone up in small businesses. They need the technology and eventually often the boost their online customers to keep up in this digital world. And they do so by offering grants, programs and services to all the businesses. So starting off with grants, this grant easily closed at the end of September. I have called the digital transformation grant, which is a twenty five hundred dollar grant. And it's used for small businesses with. I have called the digital transformation grant, which is a twenty-five hundred dollar grant, uh, that is used for small businesses with, uh, in the adoption of technology. Uh, by boosting their digital literacy skill through, uh, training, to find a good court, um. And eligible cost for this grant includes, uh, digital marketing, uh, whether it be website help or, uh, social media advertisements. So website technology improvement, uh, digital training, uh, and software and also some other partners. Uh, this is recently closed, um, after when it will open again for another round and through around there. The other grant that is open right now is called the Canada Digital Adoption Plan or. Which is a twenty-four hundred dollar grant, uh, that is more directed towards e-commerce. Um, it involves, uh, small businesses in adoption of an e-commerce brand. Uh, eligible cost for this grant include, uh, improvement or development of a e-commerce website. Uh, e-commerce software, some of the hardware, uh, digital market, marketing that is related to, uh, your e-commerce store, uh, or any other cost that are related to implementing your e-commerce. Uh, now moving on to the programs, they have, uh, the shop year programs, um, with a pair of you with an e-commerce form here to help you, uh, create, uh, market and uh, turn it down managed, uh, online store. Uh, as well as your path, taking online store using, uh, the shop fly or light speed or square, uh, they will also sit in any hobbying. And then there is the, uh, digital service block. The doctors, uh, free one-on-one digital support to small businesses, uh, and how to digitally improve in the. Uh, this could be in a number of things or social media help, uh, website design help, online presence, uh, SEO. Uh, and my. Uh, I have a doctor that'll help me in the presentation as well. I kind of like them more. What we offer. Uh, as per past programs, uh, one that I wanted to bring up is called Future Group. Uh, it was created on the COVID nineteen four measure, uh, to help future groups of small businesses and private owners. Uh, this program helps businesses identify new markets, uh, pivot their business model and developing, it is really a deep digital transformation. Uh, this is one that we would like to see come back. And just going over the numbers for Southern Central, uh, first year of this number three program offered, uh, was in twenty twenty. And as we've had, uh, Future Group, uh, digital transformation grant, uh, the digital service spot program and the shop here. Uh, as for numbers, uh, for the digital transformation grant, we saw total fifty-eight grants available, uh, in the central area, um, between now and twenty twenty. Uh, C D A was offered in two years. We have seen, uh, three grants so far being distributed. And there are also three more that are going through the optimization process. Um, as for the shop here program, uh, we saw certain businesses compete, uh, as a program in one way or another with the implementing of a store or just the. Uh, and as well as the twenty fifty business has reached, uh, received, uh, from the, uh, digital service. Uh, as per the town of Edward Cardinal, since twenty twenty, uh, technical transformation grants have been distributed. Uh, or the two D A grants that have been distributed and ten businesses, uh, have a E commerce from the shop here program. As well as where you buy different businesses E commerce from the digital. Thank you.
Really question, just, um, it's nice to see the numbers, you know, um, and I, I will say thank you for, you know, joining, uh, joining the team at the digital service squad, uh, to, you know, take over the work. It's important. It certainly helped a lot of folks, you know, in small businesses, you know, like, you know, our, we didn't do it. But, but like, you know, our business, uh, be able to still work and be able to contribute through it and not only through that, um, you know, even today to compete um, with a bigger market, for sure. Well, it's, it's good for that. So thanks for helping out. It's good to see that it's evenly split, really. I didn't, I wasn't sure that it would be that even. It looks like it's a third, a third, and a third, pretty much, right?
Pretty close, yeah.
Pretty close. Good. And no word on continued funding from the province though, just the federal one?
For the C D A, yeah, the digital transformation grant, I must give you word.
Thanks, Alan. Keep it on, Rick. We guys get a better look? Thanks.
Yeah, well, uh, the, the mayor talked about that, uh, digital transformation grant. Oh, I'm glad, though. I'm, I'm hoping that we can, uh, put that up and run. Is there anything that we can do with council, maybe, uh, send a letter to them or whatever that maybe help, uh, get the digital transformation back and keep that funding? I think the number of fundings and, uh, another thing. We had a new business just opened up here, um, and I guess, uh, I've been working with it pretty close. It's the restaurant Cardinal, actually, and, uh, I'm wondering if I could maybe pass it on to them that, and get in contact with, or maybe have you gotten in contact with them?
Yeah.
Oh, good.
I have a description here for my email or something on that.
Okay. Good, because I think he could maybe, uh, use some help there too, so.
Yeah.
Great.
Actually, I was talking about my.
Okay, excellent, excellent. And, uh, well done. Again, the numbers are there. Thanks very much. Appreciate it.
No problem.
And, um, the numbers are there, um, and if, like I said, if we can do anything to get that program back, we'll, we'll do our best. Thanks again.
Thank you. Cancel my time. You got any questions, sir?
Uh, no questions, but thank you to the speaker for, for dropping in for sure. Thanks a lot.
Perfect. Thank you very much, Taylor. Appreciate your time. Uh, all right, so, uh, so moving on to number five C, which is, uh, delegation from baseload power, uh, Jonathan Sandler, you're putting yours on perfectly. Monica Jonathan, that sounds good. Um, and, uh, they're going to talk about a, uh, municipal support for a battery energy storage project, so. Uh, welcome Jonathan.
Well, thank you very much for, uh, allowing me to come again today, taking time to update you on the last presentation. Information that we presented. Uh, I was trying to go through the slides that I already pro, uh, discussed, but, um, you know, a little bit more about baseload power, so. Uh, speaking, uh, you know, in terms of our projects, we do have a couple of other projects in other municipalities that we are developing as well as the township here. However, our, you know, our focus is on this project. We were pre-qualified by the I N S O to, uh, work with projects, so it is already been, as I said, well, we, we pre-qualified as a company, but also a project that's been pre-qualified. So it will be, you know, bid into this upcoming RFP process. And the RFP process is, is in response to, as we discussed before, the Ontario system is in dire need of electricity resources. They're looking for about four thousand megawatts in a pre, um, in an RFP process. They already ran in February. They did a worth on tax to energy, battery and storage projects and blow natural gas projects. Obviously, for our perspective, you know, we think battery and energy storage is really a critical piece of puzzle for the overall system. And these RFP processes are competitive processes. And so one of the components to fit into the RFP is, uh, taking from council, a very high level, uh, support and principle uh, from council, you know, that the project is supportive, but there's still, it's not a good for the project. It still has to go through all of the normal approval processes, uh, from a province, from electrical, uh, and environmental perspective, and also from the municipality as well. So, uh, the, the supporter is, it is said, is just a supportive principle. We talked a little bit about battery storage systems in the past. Uh, one of the things I just want to highlight here is that there's each container is about as sort of a shipping container. Inside a container, there is cooling systems, there is, uh, safety, uh, elements, uh, to deal with, you know, uh, any kind of thermal runway or fire concerns. Uh, there is venting, there's panels that would baffle off to allow more airflow to come in as a safety measure to avoid any potential issues as a way to mitigate it. And then as you can see in, I don't know if you can see my mouse, but there are modules, uh, that are stacked on top of each other. Each module is itself monitored for heat and any other kind of, you know, abnormal operating conditions. So actually we spoke, uh, battery and storage, we can do that for, but compared to the alternative, which is really natural gas. It doesn't create any current greenhouse gases or any other kind of pollution. Uh, it is a dimension proven to be cost competitive. Under the last RFP, there was natural gas projects and battery energy storage projects. The price that was, uh, published by the government was actually quite comparable. So battery energy storage is competitive with other technologies. And we discussed it before, but we will also, battery energy storage system will save the province and all of the rate payers, um, money in terms of their, you know, because we have excess supply for electricity at night, we can store that excess supply and use it during peak times during the day rather than having to go and buy that peak power from our neighbors elsewhere. So it's a made in Toronto solution and it would also avoid the need to build brand new power lines. Uh, we talked about this particular project. It's was, it's already been pre-approved for up to three hundred megawatts. We're still trying to define exactly the size of the project, but that process is going to happen in the course of the next few weeks. The location is off the bench in a road, uh, it's a total of about twenty-five acres in, in the, in, uh, in terms of the, the road use, uh, for the road, you did the electrical line, the actual battery systems, any setbacks that are required for property lines and whatnot. The location that we've selected is strategic because of the fact that it is so far away from homes. So it really, by adding that distance, it mitigates, uh, you know, noise concerns, any, uh, safety concerns and site lines and so on and so forth. The property is located on private land outside of the environmental sensitive areas. The property actually has, uh, under the official plan, it, uh, the, this particular project is considered permitted use. So, uh, a rezoning, a non-est, so entirely required. However, site plan and site control is still a part of our process. And as I mentioned, the I S R was already confirmed, uh, that it is a reliable spot to, to inject the power. Because we will be charging at night and then discharging back during the day during the peaks. Uh, the property is also located really right close to the power line. Power line is in sight, so it was very small power lines to be built. As I mentioned, it's located far from the road so that, you know, definitely improves the site lines. We can build and add any of the kind of, uh, visual screening that's required if that becomes a concern for the community. The existing access road will be off, off, uh, used for, for the project. And there is an existing farm road as well, and we will just be upgrading that farm road. That farm road would, uh, have to be a four season road to ensure that, you know, emergency vehicles and whatnot can be, uh, you know, in access to site at all times as well as our own operation team. The, uh, the other thing I guess to mention is that, you know, in terms of land use, battery and storage are much more efficient, so much more dense. Uh, you know, electricity, uh, in terms of density, so you get way more megawatts, uh, much more, uh, footprint than something like solar farm. So this is the map of the project and yellow, the orange line, it represents the existing hydro transmission system. It's a two hundred and thirty K D, uh, system. The red areas represent the actual parcel, but only the blue area is where the batteries will be located. So it's not, the, even though the red areas are identified, they're just identified for the perspective of the parcels that are being contemplated for the project, but the, the blue area is really where the batteries is, you can go below here. The, uh, green line will be the new, uh, new power line that we would have to build to get to the connection point. And the connection point is highlighted in yellow, you know, yellow sets. So local benefits for the project, we propose will be, there are multiple financial benefits. One of them is recurring community benefit payments. These payments will be, uh, over, you know, per year, over twenty years. We're anticipating that, you know, it's going to be in, you know, many tens of thousands of dollars, if not above a hundred thousand dollars per year. We're just finalizing the size. I mentioned before, the size of the project is a critical piece of the puzzle. And so, uh, we'll have more, I have knowledge exactly of, you know, the amounts, uh, once we finalize the site and once the project has been, um, you know, awarded a contract. Cause if, if, if there's no contract from the RFP process, then unfortunately the project is kind of on hold. And, and it's on hold until you get a contract from this RFP process. So again, similarly, we wouldn't be going through any, you know, municipal permitting process until we were successful under the RFP. Uh, there will also be increased tax revenues and also local materials would be, you know, used as, you know, to the maximum uh, possibility of the way in which we can. Obviously, from our perspective, from, you know, both as the municipality perspective and from our perspective, you know, using local resources, materials, labor, service industries, it benefits, it's a win-win. We don't have to ship in all this stuff from outside. For this particular project, we're anticipating, and it's, you know, anticipation depending on resources that are available that we could, uh, perceive as spending about ten million dollars of constructing, uh, funds in the, uh, in the Orleans local materials and equipment. And then obviously the, you know, tertiary service industry will hopefully be lost. The project has the potential opportunity to help strengthen the quality, the liability and security of the system that's, you know, kind of right through Edwardsburg Cardinal. And so, um, you know, it does provide essential additional security for this sort of, the overall system in this area because we will have substations that are feeding from the power lines. And these substations would then be feeding the power, the roof of the electric plant that are running on municipal roads. Uh, we would all, obviously for, you know, have a road use agreement so that we're ensuring that any damage, uh, to the roads is repaired at our cost. And this will carry on for the life of the project. In terms of staple consultation to date, we've held a staple consultation with the town of staff. We did, as you know, made the delegation to council on October tenth. We've had multiple consultations with Southern Nation Conservation, uh, Board and we've held a public meeting. There was a total of, uh, there was a total of ten, uh, people that had signed in to the public meeting. Uh, we went through a two-hour presentation with them. Uh, the meeting was held on Wednesday in the Perth. And the feedback forms were delivered, you know, offered up to all the participants along with self addressed envelopes so that they could return their feedback to us. To date, uh, we haven't received any feedback, but obviously the window is open. Uh, there will be, uh, you know, if this project is more contract in the RFP process, there will be multiple consultations, mainly in open houses, to the community. Uh, we have listed our presentation on our project website as well as it is posted from my understanding on the town's website as well. The questions that came up were regarding, uh, fire, groundwater, deconditioning, setbacks from tunnels, uh, setbacks from environmental areas, municipal approval process and the financial community benefits, which were all answered by our staff in the presentation. All the information is contained in the presentation. This particular presentation is a bit of a summary, but we have included all of, uh, the information in the appendix after this presentation. So the top, you know, I, we sort of tried to highlight what were the top four concerns that were raised during the meeting. And so, uh, noise is one of them. One of the things that we discussed with that, uh, And so uh noise, one of them, one of the things that we discussed with that uh noise uh regulation. You definitely need all the noise regulations. The the regulation standard in Ontario is that at uh at nighttime in a rural area, we have to be forty decibels. Uh so forty decibels is basically dead quiet. I don't know if I've experienced this, but I have tested it myself. Uh in other locations, we've actually done some uh ambient noise assessments and those are also forty decibels. So basically the rule is you cannot add any new noise to what that otherwise would be dead loud. And this regulation is in place for the whole, whole life of the project. The other uh, you know, question was around fire uh management. And so, you know, as a part of that process, we have reached out to fire chief. Uh unfortunately, we haven't had a chance to speak as of yet, but we have spoken to the fire chiefs across the province. And what we can say about the the issues around fire, we, there is a lot of sensationalized uh situation going on. And in terms of overall risk, uh what we're seeing is that we took all of the characteristics. That you may see uh an issue of one to two percent. And the issue that exists would be in one of the modules. In sort of one, one percent of all the modules in a, in a farm. Uh you know, you would have a potential issue. So that the, so if we had a hundred percent of the hundred containers at one of the locations. You may have one module within one of those containers that has a thermal issue. And that issue can be mitigated through different uh safety mechanisms in the actual containment set. So it doesn't necessarily mean that an issue is going to automatically turn into a problem. Uh as part of fire management plan, it will be hazard uh mitigation assessment. There will be a fire risk assessment, fire protection and design and emergency response plan. All of which will be coordinated with the fire chief. And the education, integration and awareness would all be part of that plan. One thing I can say, we've spoken to many experts in the uh in the industry. Uh one of the things that keeps coming up is that a battery fires, no, no, is actually less toxic than a normal house. If the chemicals that are in the house and situated, you know, that causes a fire, those uh issues are. Exponentially more than the uh potential concern, excuse me, uh in the structure of that. So and there's nothing new, you know, in in terms of the fire department is actually already trained on how to manage a fire. There is no new information that they need specifically to deal with batteries. In terms of groundwater management, uh obviously groundwater management will be provided. And uh, you know, we don't see any issues in terms of in the class perspective. Uh there will be uh. There will be some containment because transformer stations, if I add the one used containment, you would be doing the same thing. In terms of the big basic plan, the project, the contract, it's about a twenty year contract uh will be out there. So because this is a critical infrastructure, it's part of the electricity system. Their likelihood to extend will be quite high. And in the event that there is a deconditioning, uh our agreement with the landlord is to remove all the equipment and return the land back to its normal state. And then there is possible uh re uh sort of recycling for battery drivers. Uh in terms of determinate, I know we're just running out of time. Um but basically the two determining is required for the same as what I have one of them. And uh and we talked about the zoning. And so in terms of municipal support, we are asking for the council to revise our municipal support for a solution. Which again is uh being principal for the project and would not give us any specific approvals to proceed. There we go, I will leave her for that.
Thank you, Jonathan, I know it's a lot to handle, I mean, I think uh, you know, we on council have seen it, we've seen it a few times. Between yourself and other and other interested parties and uh. Uh it's good to get the refresher first for people in attendance as well as uh to put it on camera. So uh with that, uh if you have any more questions, I was scared, definitely bear.
Um I just have a couple, you said you're doing uh twenty five acres. But you're also taking two hundred acre buffer, is that right? So it's going to be two hundred and twenty five, twenty five for the actual batteries, two hundred for the buffer.
We have a twenty five acre for the higher budget, which is to do the road.
Yeah.
And power and batteries.
Yeah.
And then in terms of a setback, we have actually, I think it's almost nine hundred meter setback of any house or potential house. So we don't necessarily need that much space. It just gives a uh much more comfort that we're going to meet all of the conditions and that. Anything that really is a concern is significantly mitigated besides the.
Right, but you're gonna be leasing the twenty five acres plus the two hundred acres, is that right?
Uh our agreement with the landlord is, yes, in terms of however much land you need. Uh we want the landlords to continue to farm.
Okay.
So there will be a secure fence around the whole.
Twenty five acres.
Yeah. Uh but and so we do want the landlord to farm that property up to the fence.
Okay. Uh number two, you said that uh we would get approximately a hundred thousand dollars per year for twenty years?
Our expectation.
Is that your expectation?
Yeah, but again, we we don't know the exact time.
No, right, it's fine.
But if we're, we're talking a significant uh investment that we would be making.
Plus.
Uh annuals.
Very, plus the spin off of having written our equipment to build your twenty five acres.
True, the construction, yes, and and I also would mention that local jobs, there will be some local jobs. We could be an onsite operator, we need a site uh, you know, maintenance or we need to make sure that roads open during winter off of stage. And so there will be uh ongoing set maintenance and operational work where where we see that as a perfect fit for.
Just one more question for this.
And uh, you said that you haven't met with your fire chief yet? Have you, have you tried to set up a meeting or?
I've been, yeah, I reached out a few times.
Okay, so we haven't sat, you haven't sat down with him though?
I have not, I have not sat down.
Okay, and just in closing, I was at your meeting to the public, November first, well attended. Uh and people answered all the questions that the eight people had, say ten, including me, I guess. Uh it was well, well organized and and uh from what I gathered from the people over here is well received. So um I, you have my support, I'm a little, I just don't get. We have an issue with our township about taking agricultural land away. You know, because the farmer's got a farm so he can eat. And now we're putting twenty five acres of factories in the farm. But that's. I have a hard time swallowing that by real support, thank you.
Uh, can I tell you have anything uh to add?
I, I do not, no questions, thanks to the speaker for the presentation, very well done.
I have like a hundred, a hundred questions, okay, well. Uh but I won't ask them all because I think Jonathan, you've answered, I forwarded my list.
Yeah.
Uh to you, you covered most of, most of those, um. So, so I E S O pre-qualified the, they're they're pre-qualified projects, right?
Yes.
And the project is if, so the project's been pre-qualified. And if it advances from this stage, it will get bid in, you'll be able to bid into the RFP stage.
Yes.
Is that, am I correct in thinking that?
Yes.
So when you go through that pre-qualification program, are things like through the I E S O. When they look at your project, are they just looking at what what you might be able to do? Are they looking at things like the fire suppression systems? Are they looking at the package that you're building, knowing you're not fly by night if you've made it through the pre-qualification stages?
Yeah, I mean, so the I E S O's is that. Every site is slightly unique in that there are a lot of uh pieces of the public that are required as we move through the project. So fire management plan is one of the key pieces that will be part of the development. Which we will be consulting with the fire chief about and we will be developing it in concert with it and with the township. So the I E S O doesn't recognize that, same with groundwater management. And, you know, dust management, construction plan, road use agreements, all these pieces of the public they recognize. Are kind of later stage items, because there's a lot of engineering. They sort of recognize that for developer, they don't want any nostalgia, they don't want to put us all through all that stuff. Now, if you project never get a contract. So they kind of, they want the municipality to to give the support because they want to know that you're working. In a municipality that accepts the project, is interested in the project. That had been properly planned in many ways to address the municipal and township concerns. But they don't necessarily want you to have to go through all that intel engineering. Spending hundreds of millions of dollars or whatever and then only find a product that didn't work out. So um yeah, so the I E S O uh they qualified us from an electrical perspective. But when they came out with RFP, the rules of the RFP was set out in such a way. That they wanted to make sure that we have municipal support uh in in principle. And that if the, you know, you can't, you you may not foresee every single issue look at this early stage. But the proponents are, we are going to have to put a lot of security on this bid. So we are heavily incented to make sure that we address all the issues all the way through. Because if we come across an issue that we can't satisfy, then we lose our security deposit.
Yeah, and pre-qualification is just sort of narrowing that pyramid down.
Yes, yeah, okay. And we, and the security deposits are making sure that people are serious before the bid. And so and then obviously, as I mentioned, municipal support.
Yes, I mean, it's Ontario, it's Canada, of course, we have to build the codes and we have to build with. I mean, to think that that's reasonable, understand that that'll come later and we're just sort of funneling, funneling it in. So I get that, so um I just wanted to clear it up though. So I think it's important that everybody understand that you have actually pre-qualified to get, to get to where you are at this point, so um. I do, I do have a couple, so you're gonna have to allow me a little leeway, so um. Ownership is, you're leasing the land.
Yes.
Okay, so what happens if the land gets sold? It's two different lots, am I correct?
Yes.
So what happens if one of them gets sold, it gets, somebody dies, like, whatever, the land, there's a land transfer, what happens to them?
The the project is fixed with the land, so the the if the land is sold, that that lease agreement will go with that sale. So it's registered in Ontario and it's an island.
Okay, good. And so the other thing, the other major hurdle that I see for you is the roadway that has to be. And ultimately, it's the laneway that has to be created to withstand the weight of, of batteries that are ridiculously. Uh heavy, so. It's not my concern, it's not our road, but I I've, I mean, it is our concern if we need to have access to that road for a fire or for any other reason. So.
Yes.
But can you speak to the the road, the building, the construction, that sort of stuff?
Yeah, so road for our purposes, well, I mean, the the construction, the civil work is going to take about five to six months. And the battery shipments are going to take two to three months. And now we, you know, trucks on a regular basis. The, you know, each container comes individualized and then they will obviously assemble it on the site. So road has to withstand that much traffic to be given, has to be built in that way. And similarly, we have to make sure that throughout the bid, there wasn't probably one of the containers. We need to bring the whole crane system and more trucks. So we have to, uh for our earnings, for our financing, for everything in the operations project. That road has to be built to withstand its four season road.
Right, so the the word road concerns me a little bit, so um you're not expecting the township to be responsible for the road? It's your responsibility, correct?
I understand.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear and on the record, that that that's the.
Yeah, I understand.
So two or three more and I'll be done. Um are there any jobs, like, you know, like direct jobs? I I think you've talked about the construction jobs and stuff like that, but actual onsite jobs, no, right?
Well, so there will be a local uh operator. So we will need to have somebody that lives in the area that is, you know, operating, involved in operating the system. And we also need local people to do all the site maintenance to make sure that road is maintained. Make sure that it's, you know, four season all the time. Uh and, you know, we could see others, you know, security features, um, you know, in terms of cleaning and. Property maintenance, uh we see that as an option as well. But a lot of the, you said there's a lot of money put into the construction and it's not a lot of ongoing duty parts.
Yep.
So, I mean, it will be, you know, there's there's electrical contracting. Uh we're using transformers that are sitting everywhere. So if there is a local uh electrician or engineer or what have you that can service these uh these equipment. It's way better for us and also good for the community. So every, every which way we possibly can, we'll be looking for local resources, labor, uh expertise to maintain. So it's not all, I think the batteries technology's advanced. Uh all the electrical lines, the connections, the inverters, transformers, either the normal or the. These are the book of that kind of anybody that's trained to offer them.
Okay, uh to stop, agricultural land, yes, or rural land? And is it included in the LEER? And are we, or like for its twenty five acres worth of the site, their containers, are we collecting tax revenue? Off of, off of an energy project?
Uh, dear chair, the main plan is supposed to be this site, it's not the main priority.
Okay.
Not where it's in the, in the, in the. Uh as a public use, a zoning by law, we're not on the next, the. Is committed in any zone, um except for environmental protection and it's about the basic um means of the check of the laws. But um whether it's agricultural or rural, ours is developed.
And and we will collect tax revenue from it? It's not an on on firm diversified use, correct? I'm just, I'm just trying to make sure that there's actually a benefit beyond the C B F.
You're sure, I I would.
Can we find it?
Yeah.
Okay, um and the last one, like Jonathan.
Uh that we we parks, so the, there is tax revenue, so we don't expect anything different.
Yeah, right, oh. Yeah, I'll let staff answer that one. Um and the the uh, did you do the community benefit funding? So that was the one that really piques my interest, right? Because, because it sounds like, I mean, I've been following along with the presentations, obviously, that you've been making. And I've heard, you know, I think the number I heard tonight is a hundred thousand, I heard three hundred thousand. So, so how do we, how do we come to find out exactly what the community, community benefit fund is, first of all? And how do you determine the amount? And um. You know, basically just how does it work?
Yeah.
And is it, is it basically is a guarantee?
So, yes, it is guaranteed revenue, it'll be a contract that we would enter into the municipality and township. Uh what we're, you know, because it's a process, we want to make sure obviously that. If, you know, if other projects are offering the same thing, it's likely they are, you know, what are they offering and how do we compare? We want to make sure that we are uh competitive, that we're presenting the market value for this amount. So from what we understand, uh the amount is a thousand dollars per megawatt per year. And it's just the reason I have given different ranges of, there was a, we're not exactly sure how many megawatts would be. Uh for, you know, built at the site. So in, as as we mentioned, the top number could be three hundred megawatts. But uh, we don't know if that's in fact the size of the project yet, so we're just trying to finalize that. But so we know for sure that a hundred megawatts is the floor. And so that's why we do it.
Okay, so that would get us to the hundred thousand, and three hundred thousand would get us to the three.
Yeah, and we can, and as part of the, you know, as part of the municipal uh support. Uh we can, we have done and considered including this contract. As part of our support element in sort of a, not condition, but an element of providing support because. There are local.
And and so you said, you said that if you, you go through the RFP process, the I E S O, great, see the contract. It's a twenty year non-cancelable contract? Or can they cancel it at any time?
No, no, they cannot cancel it.
Twenty year?
Yes, a twenty year contract. Uh we're putting up, there should be hundreds of billions of dollars of infrastructure in the ground. And so, no, we, nobody can cancel it because of the.
So the township as a revenue source would see from, from this project, if it produced three hundred megawatts a year. Then we would see three hundred thousand dollars a year for twenty years guaranteed.
I would, I, a little bit cousins would say that the hundred is.
I'm going to the ceiling, I know you want to go to the floor, but.
I know I'm going, I'll say, I would love to go to the ceiling, but I just want to be careful.
So the minimum that we could see would be a hundred thousand a year for twenty years, correct? A lot, there's a lot of pain. It's a lot of pain. It's a lot of pain.
Absolutely.
A lot of effort I'd love to have.
Yeah.
Um. Oh, you said that's more. I'm in ninety, I'm in ninety-eight. I'm in ninety-eight. I think honestly you did a good job of mine, I'm just trying to think of other ones that I've, that I, that I came up with, uh, before. And I know so many of them will get answered as you move down the process, because this is more the beginning than, than the finalization, so.
Yeah, you were mentioning about, uh, operation buildings, so interestingly enough, uh, the last delegation, the one before the delegation. You probably would look to their, uh, services to build us, uh, operations.
Yeah, exactly, I could s- see that there might have been a synergy there. Uh, I think, yeah, I, yeah, I think like. Um, and I, uh, actually, it's, we don't ask it sometimes, because then you don't have to ask the many questions, because I think you got a ton of most of the stuff. But I would cover most of the questions here as well. Um, I did have some, uh, uh, some feedback from people along the way, I guess word gets out. And, uh, I don't think they attended, they shouldn't have been out here tonight, but, uh, there'd be a lot of people's concerns, um, are surrounding, you know, well. Fire, some people said explosion, um, and, and, you know, not to scare, but I mean, that's obviously a, a scary concept and, uh. Um, you know, I, I, you know, knowing how that looks and how you work with our fire department, I think is important as an aspect. Um, and, and I'm not sure, I mean, I, you know, my only experience on this is, you see on T V from T V shows, so, you know. But I understand that when putting a fire, battery fires, it can be different, different than other fires, it might need specialized equipment and things like that. So how does that work as far as working with the fire chief to, to require these, these assets, I guess, that we would need, or, or, what does that look like?
Yeah, so, so current best practices are that, you know, you might have some water reservoirs on site. But you do not need, you, you, they don't, you know, we're not using, uh, special fire retardants, because they won't really work when there's potential for detonation. So we stay away from that. And there isn't any specialized equipment for sale. Uh, as I was mentioning before, a battery fire is, uh, there's nothing new in terms of mitigating or management. It's all been done before, it, it's, uh, you know, you, you've got electricity, uh, infrastructure, like substation. That could arc, uh, create a fire, or the transformer could, uh, cause a fire. And so those systems are located su- super close to a house, uh, potential forest area. In this case, we, we have the benefit of distance, so that we're not looking over eight hundred, nine hundred meters away from the closest. Uh, so yeah, the fire department doesn't need to invest in any of the specialized program. If there was any investment, we would name that for them, but we would think that if there is onsite water reservoir, we would cover that cost. Uh, so we do not want to add, add any cost to the fire department, that's not kind of all of the plan. And, um, and yeah, as I mentioned before, we would train fire department, we would probably bring them up. Specialized information settings and ongoing updates and whatnot, but again, there's, they're training, they're rescraining, cover. All the same, uh, fire, I, you know, add, it would be considered, uh.
Okay, great, and, uh, like I said, I think you covered all the other questions that I had, yeah. So appreciate the time, Jonathan. Yeah, so, uh, so, so you do have an ask. I mean, ultimately, you want municipal support, so when, when are we going to be seeing, seeing that ask and what are you expecting? Uh, to be part of that, that contract, that agreement as we move forward? Because I mean, I know it's not support for the end, it's support for the beginning, so, so what does that look like?
So the values are created on actual form, that we would ask for municipal, together. We, there's a lot of it based on the project, so we would have the company, the property information, size of the project. The prequalification information that we discussed, all of that will be on the forum. And we would fill it out together with the municipal township, and I guess staff. You know, do it together, and then you can come back as, if this is the form to approve. And attached to that, we can provide like a, a simple letter, you know, a commitment letter from us about the community.
And so when are you looking? Like, how, when are we talking?
Yeah, so we need to come back, the, I think the term set is the date of the next council meeting. That we were talking.
So we'll see something that acts on. Well, we're seeing something today. Oh, we're gonna see it later, later on the second, the second. For the discussion that number six. Four, three discussion. Sure, we are, I mean, that's, we're having a discussion now, I think six-three is gonna go fairly quickly because we're getting on this now. But we're having a discussion here, then we'll bring it to council, and we'll bring it to council at the end of the month. Is there, I'm sorry, I didn't see that, is there a recommendation with, with that?
Sure, there's a discussion, I thought, with the resolution, you know.
Okay.
See, we can fill out all those, all those pieces of public, uh, in the, on the, I think we talked about the twenty, sir. Twenty-second, you have a form.
Uh, Chair, and most of the, um, schedule is still out there, and I brought a vision with me to, uh, review. Not all of the answers will be not available, so maybe somebody's out there in particular before it goes to.
I think the only other one, and I know this might be putting staff on the spot a little bit, and other, I mean, we've asked a ton of questions. We normally look to staff, um, for their guidance and for their help and that sort of stuff. Um, are there questions that, that we haven't asked that, that ultimately we need answers to before we can make this a ring?
Here, Chair. No, I, um, have the opportunity to speak with baseball team a number of times now, before they made, um, some decisions, with the city's, the operations. Um, so staff's questions have, uh, been answered by the team who, um, uh. Are called, have a, are great individual initiatives to so far, um. The, uh. Maybe council support in the resolution doesn't indicate that, um, all the planning is not taken in the next year. Um, still, still time, and there's still, like, you have to help this pretty good, that whole process, and then you're on, so this, um. Kind of non-negotiable, if it's, if it's, if you get, you're okay with this shot. Um, with, with this project, but it was so beautiful, we sent, thank you for, for that. As we were more of a project, if there are any of this on file, I don't, I'll then, as long as I want, um, to hire, ask them to, right now, they need supplies. Um, we don't know if there are any other areas going to file that.
I just wanna make sure that we've. Yep, we've had the discussions. Thanks, John. Alright. We knew there was gonna be a lot of delegations in the same time, so, uh, alright, yeah, absolutely. Well, yeah, we like to entertain. Number five, the, uh, uh, proposed development of six, six oh eight county road number two. Request for easement and Mr. Dave Anavell, Man, that was on, uh, to present to us.
I will not be as intense. Goodness. So, but the little projects at the end, so, um. Happy to be here this evening, speaking of six oh eight town road soon. Uh, we've got clients that, uh, purchase the property, and they're, they're all a bit of a transportation and adding residential, residential details. Uh, on this subject land, uh, we had a meeting, um, with the community development, county. Uh, all parties and, uh, agreed with the C E O, the township, that recommended a possible land use agreement and aid agreement. Um, for, uh, the activities which are a township fund and a role in ours. Uh, we go to Scottville, we found out that there is actually services on it, first of all, the firing. Uh, then now we know that there are services on it, we're looking to see, before we start a whole long process, planning and development processes. Bring it on. Uh, we need to just come here with delegations, council, answer a few questions, or verify any unknowns. Uh, about the, the possible support, uh, for this landing use agreement. So, if you have any questions on it, it's pretty straightforward, we're gonna identify with the second building, eighteen, uh, sixteen to eighteen additional units. The primary uses to, uh, to build the amenity space and additional parking requirements for the.
Thank you very much, I knew you'd catch us a long time there, David. Um, okay, well, let's start, uh, council of our town, do you have any questions on your end?
I do not, I could not hear the speaker very well, but I read the material and I have no question.
Okay, great. Um, yeah, I, I, uh. I, I mean, I do, I guess, have a, have a couple, right, um. The. The only concern that I have, really, uh, Dave, and I, you know, I did mention this, you know, to, to you in advance the meeting, and I wish I would have. Um, had more time, you know, I hated to drop it on you then, is, but we've had an emergency exercise in, in the township. And the parking lot, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, of this project. Was the emergency egress for. The accident that happened on, the theoretical accident that happened on highway two, in the corner of Saint Lawrence Street, blocking entrance to the Meadowlands subdivision. That's a problem. Right? Like, that's, or is it a problem?
Uh, here, Chair, this, like, uh, the map.
We are not connected without it. From now on, then.
We're not, yes, we're not.
Right, when we did the emergency exercise in Meadowlands Road, the, the entrance to Meadowlands Road was blocked. There's no other entrance way into it, so the only way through that exercise. Right, was, was up beside and across the alley. Accessible.
But there's no road there, man.
There's no, this is not a.
Right.
It's, it's on, it's grass.
I realize that there's, there's no other way in.
So why not go continue using it, if we ever had them, there's, there's only using it for, 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 for.
I just wanna make sure that we know that it's the only. Not, not hold him up, I think it's fantastic.
Yeah, no, no, or. I just don't see where you're going, but if, if we can't get through it anyways right now.
Thank you, we already had. Well, the emergency exercise we did.
Yeah.
Through the chair, the scrap, that was where that, uh, logo box was.
We used it, we used it as.
We used it as an emergency.
Now, so, so where I'm going with it is, is the, is the paving of the parking lot. Right, accomplishing somewhat of a goal. As long as it doesn't get locked off, because, because if, ultimately, if there was that simulated accident. Would it not make it easier? Because part of that simulated accident, I think, was trying to find a way through there. Right, through that grassed area, this way it would become paved as a parking lot, all we have to do is move a couple of cars and we'd have full access.
Sure, potentially.
That actually helps. In the long run.
Through, through Chair two, I mean, move this information again, just learning it, um. We're, we're starting the design process right now, so if this is something the township seriously wants us to allocate for. We could probably just, both parking, maybe, uh, shift things back to align a six meter half route if you're not moving. Like, imagine that residents are there, or there are cars that are parked. Um, but we definitely, we have six meter laneway, it's probably, look at my site plan, it's probably within two meters. So, too much, um, but the reason, just to align it, go straight through, I moved the lane, my. Park was based on meters, but I'm really only with less buffer zone, but we're here tonight just looking for. Initial support, uh, to know that this is something that we can continue in conversation with fire, uh, community, community development and, uh, C E O.
God, I mean, I think anything that gets, uh, housing built faster, um, without making it more complicated and difficult. And I think it's at eighteen units, Dave, uh, anytime we can get eighteen people that are currently housed, housed, I think in this environment. You know, we need to do whatever we can do to make that happen, so, so no, I'm hundred percent in support, just trying to make sure that we don't. Eliminate. The ability, the future ability for. For a safe pa- passage and, and ultimately, that subdivision should, should be issues that persist there with the expansion of it. Uh, right, it's, it's a, it's a bit of a situation, so, um, but absolutely, hundred, hundred percent for support, I'll be voting with support. Yeah, it's easy, it's easy for me. So, Mr. Bear, that, let's be happy, Bear.
No, uh, we discussed a few issues there, uh, uh, Dave and I before the meeting, uh, I'm one, as you know, I'm like, the mayor. Here, the quicker we can get eighteen homes with two bedrooms for rent. Um, please. Work with Wendy and the C E Os and, and their building, building, uh, respect, just to get a call. No, I'm a hundred percent. I, I, it's a little more question, sort of, I can.
How about you stop? You are the chair. From, from our perspective, Dave, I know, you know, in the past, some onerous tasks are happening. Is there, like, we, we want, this is achieving a mandate for, for this entire council by, by creating projects like this. Is there something, you know, is there anything that we can, I know the process has to go the pro- process, but is there anything that we can do to help you get it done faster?
Um, I don't think so, we, we, we had a lot of great meetings, the financing was in place, great clients, uh, they're, they're. Unknown, but very busy in your township, uh, leave their most one hundred doors already, uh, and they're constant. I think I got another hundred that drop for me to start looking on, um.
Hopefully here, so.
Yeah, yeah, no, the focus on, uh, and, uh, no, many of them have had amazing conversations, as she was just with us. And C E O could evolve this, and we were talking to counties, so we, we, I thought, I think the majority of our issues, sort of. You know, just making sure we're not going over the dice on your support, if you have ahead of time, we can start proceeding with that, you know, in the sense.
Okay, let's get it on. Hundred percent. Uh, well, yeah, moving on, I mean, I had a couple of questions, I think you've answered most of them, I mean, I, you know, I worry a little bit about the, uh. Uh, the water and, and, uh, the water systems going through that area, but not necessarily with the parking spaces. I know, you know, getting up a parking space once in a while, that happens, and you just repave it. But I, I worry about where that, wherever the garbage depot is, that might create a different problem for you. Um, and, you know, I mean, it's, 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 it's our, and, and, you know, with, with the mayor just said about our emergency, uh. Uh, conversation there, I mean, I'm not sure why you wouldn't go further as well to the west, pave that, and then move the garbage further away. So that it's easier to access and, and things like that, but, uh, um, you know, and, and I think that's your point, that's, you know, you're still in the design phase, so that's an opportunity for you. Um, the only other thing I sort of worry a bit about is, is that it sounds like you're having some conversation with them already. But the effect on the neighboring properties, you know, beside, uh, to the east, I guess, particularly. Uh, it looks like they could all of a sudden have, you know, eighteen or about, call it nine, people looking at them all of a sudden, they're in the backyard, and they're sure you're aware of that. And we'll work with them, but, uh, that'd be a concern that I would have, um, uh, that I'm sure you guys would handle, but I just wanna make sure you, that you're aware of this. Um, and otherwise, uh, like I said, I think that covers it, um, you know, you need to see if, uh, is six thirty-eight has a lot of property as well. Which might be at the back, which seems to be they've actually fenced themselves, I don't know if you've been communicating with them or not, but, uh, maybe more opportunity there as well for you. So I was gonna say to that, so that covers all my stuff, anyways.
Yeah, through here, we try and six thirty-eight, uh, I just, yes, the, the yard happened there, they're not feeling, it's going to part eight. We actually, I think it's through county planner, um, we looked at actually, contact them and apply that. Last six thirty-eight, it's a standard parking outlay for seating this, um, the refuse is not fixed. Uh, but if we are gonna look at, um, the mayor's suggestion of that U D R route. Um, we just have to realign the garbage, just move it to the park as possible, if you're trying to get everything away from residents. And then, uh, the apartment, you know, we, we're meeting the setbacks, uh, so, you know, it's gonna be my, uh. A comment to, uh, eyes looking down into neighboring area, hope you are proposing, uh, fencing three A.
Thank you very much. Okay, and we will be talking about this later on, something as well, but, yeah, number six A four, so, alright, I'm sure you're still going. Thank you much.
Thanks, Nick.
Okay, um, on that note, that's coming from you. Uh, moving on to number six, uh, action information discussion items, uh, land, land use and planning. So, number six A one, uh, we're gonna be talking about the application for zoning bylaw amendments. number six A one, uh, we're gonna be talking about the application for zoning bylaw amendments, um, for twenty eighty four Dundas Street, uh, Zander Plan, and I believe Tracy Zander, but, yeah, Zander, Tracy Zander is online, here's one of them, he's taking, yeah, there she is.
Hang on, here, thank you.
Sometimes we bury our jobs, it happens.
That's all right.
All right, uh, okay. So, uh, on that note, I'm just getting my notes, here we go. And, uh, so Wendy, why don't you, uh, park us a bit of this one?
Thank you, you're the chair, so we'll, twenty eighty four Dundas Street first, so the security application and draft file, there's only one amendment at twenty eighty four Dundas Street, allow the convergence of an existing residential, it's only ground floor unto four residential units. So the building will contain its own ten residential dwellings following their proposed conversion. The draft file law that's in this agenda package tonight proposes that an apartment dwelling will be included as an additional permitted use for this property. Um, so a committee reviewed the application on September fifth at the communal community development meeting, um, and they directed staff to proceed scheduling a public meeting, a public meeting was held on October twenty third. There have been no comments received from the public or other agencies on this application's date. So in the package, but, uh, final report that was prepared by our planner, no type. Um, the draft file law that no type is also prepared, um, planning rationale, I have seen before, that's from the, um, applicant, uh, data point, uh, as well as site plan and, uh, work plan towards the unit.
Okay, great. Well, we have a recommendation here, uh, the recommendation reads, the committee recommended council adopt an amendment to zoning bylaw twenty two, twenty twenty two, there are thirty seven for the property of twenty eighty four Dundas Street, I'll attach to. Uh, okay, uh, you can promise, Mr. Mayor?
My wrong thing, and you've seen these before.
We said both of them before, I thought we have both, before we have heard them before.
Through the chair, we got support, uh, about the heating, yes, and committee here to know that these come back to the, uh, for, which are our normal, um.
Oh, okay.
We're looking for the recommendation on draft file law that's in here.
So move. I will second with one comment, and, and that it's, um, uh, we're on A, right, I think, the first one, which is the ten unit one. Um, you know, the only, the only comment, and, and I think this one's been being used, uh, residentially for quite, quite some time. And I, and I know we just saw eighteen units being developed, and that's, and that's great. I, I just always struggle with every time we lose the potential for commercial, you know, commercial development, and I know this one you can always, could always possibly put, you know, flip flop and come back as, come back as commercial, um. You know, there, there's no chance that what we're proving today uh, would have been commercial, I don't, I don't think anyways, with the way it's already been utilized, I think that this probably allows the, the, uh, owner to, to utilize the full property in the best manner possible at this, this point, so I have no issue. Um, uh, with it, I just, just, you know, for the record, I just hate, not hate, that's not the right word, I just, I just struggle seeing, you know, those, those MCRs losing, losing that, that, that potential for commercial, because at some point, at some point, those commercial properties will, will have people coming, we won't have anything to build, but.
Nope, I, uh, I, I know what, what he's saying, I know what we're saying, but I mean, at least it can go back to commercial. It's not as if it's gonna be always residential, something happens, and the chief, chief company want command, so she could do it, the lady that owns it, whoever, so, but we have nothing, no.
Kansas Martell, you have any questions or, uh, comments?
I had a comment, but the mayor took it almost word for words, I'm good.
Throw your notes, Joe. Gotta stop doing that. Uh, okay, uh, and I, uh, I didn't have any concerns on this one either, I know we talked a bit about it as well, and then, you know, if, the intent of the land is not necessarily for, for housing, but unfortunately, it's, it's what it's becoming, into the way the need is at, so, uh, uh, I can appreciate that, so, you know, we have a mover to secondary already. So, uh, I just will call to a motion that, or call to a vote, pardon me, so all in favor? There you go, that's unanimous, we'll, we'll move that one along. Okay. We'll go to, uh, numbers, number six A two, application for zoning of twenty seventy three Dundas Street, again, this is in the plan, um.
Thank you, through the chair, so we're reviewing application and also by draft by law, we're going about eleven twenty second event this week. To allow a portion of the commercial space on the ground floor, the one residential dwelling within the existing building. So the committee reviewed those applications on August eighth, and American staff received scheduling public meeting, once completed application, we see. And so through follow up correspondence with the active staff, uh, reviewed and updated site plan, parking agreement, and conceptual floor plan to ensure the space could accommodate each proposed use on the indoor as a commercial space and residential space. Um, a public meeting was held on October twenty third, we have not received any comments from the public or other agencies on this application today, so, um, in the agenda package, there is a plan which was prepared by no set, this will be local, so we can prepare draft file law in consideration. Um, the planning rationale will be the same thing that you've seen before, um, as well as the site plan, and conceptual floor plan that was prepared.
Um, all right, uh, and we did not leave the recommendation which I look for, I guess, I don't have to read it, well, if she has, if you don't mind, I was gonna find it.
So the recommendation is that maybe they're going to pass the dots, and then maybe it's only by law twenty twenty two, which is accepted, so the property at twenty seventy three Dundas Street has attached.
Thank you very much. Let's get with you today. Uh, same, same basic comment as, as last time, uh, only I will, I will, um, uh, thank, you know, Tracy and the owner and, and staff for being able to work out a compromise to, to allow for the potential for some commercial, so that we don't lose all of the potential for commercial, so, so this accommodates the need for the owner, helps make the building more affordable to, to keep, you know, keep the rent being paid, while still allows the development, if that development comes along, it may take a while, but, but it still allows for that potential for development on the front, on the streets, keep a portion of it, so I think it, it manages sort of the the potential, and it manages the needs of, of the ownership, and it shows good flexibility on the amount of council staff and, and the willingness of everybody else to bend a little to try to help during the housing crisis, so, so I guess my comment would be well known to everyone. And I'm happy. Council Martell?
I'm good.
Uh, no, I'll second it. Okay, perfect. Uh, just quickly, I guess, uh, uh, Tracy, so, I'm trying to figure out, and, and I know it goes into maybe the realm of where the, uh, uh, you know, the, um, uh, the, the building staff would be involved, but where are the exit doors for this apartment, is it near that hallway, near between the kitchen and the bedroom, or is it, uh, elsewhere?
Oh, that's a good question, I'm just gonna look on my other screen here and see if, I think you have a floor plan, I'm just gonna jump to that as well. Um, where is it? So, I, yeah, I, I think the exit to the residential unit is on the, I'm gonna say the south side, or the kind of the back end of the building opposite to Dundas Street. Uh, Victoria Freeborn on behalf of the, the development, uh, company is also on the call, I don't know if she knows the specifics of this building, if she can answer that, but that's what I believe, um.
Yeah, I can jump in. You guys were asking where are both doors?
Yeah, where's the access?
Okay, so I don't know the name of the street, but I've been there myself, so there's Dundas, and then there's a cross street. That cross street will have the main front door to the re- rear apartment, and then at the backside, uh, where Tracy said is gonna be the emergency exit.
Okay, perfect, that's great, thank you very much.
No problem.
Otherwise, uh, we've, you know, we've had, uh, seen this before, we had some conversation about it, I'm, I'm happy as well, so, uh, uh, let's call it to a vote then, so, uh, it's been moved by the mayor and seconded by, uh, the, uh, deputy mayor, so all in favor? Move that one along as well, great. Okay, uh, thank you very much, Victoria and, and, uh, Tracy, we're glad you were having asked me to answer questions, and, uh, we're excited to see some more, uh, residents going in the area. So.
Thank you. Great, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair, may I just ask when, uh, the council meeting might be that these bylaws would come forward?
November twenty seventh is the date that that will happen.
Twenty seventh, very good, thank you, everybody, have a nice evening.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
Okay, um, so moving on to number six A three, uh, which is now the discussion for baseload, baseload power, uh, they're seeking ministry support for the battery energy for our storage projects, so, um, I guess, well, it's part of our habit, even though I think we talked a little bit today, I don't, I don't, you know, but I think we're probably fine. Um, so, uh, now on page seven, or sorry, page eighty is where, um, the draft resolution, uh, starts finally, for anybody following along, and, um, it was page eighty of one thirteen, yeah. Uh, and so, um, this basically starts there, I think it goes another, nope, actually, the next thing is just a page to talk about it from the ministry. Um, anyway, so, uh, there, you said that to earlier, by the way, I just wanted to make sure we get this clear, but there were some things you didn't have information on, or you didn't fill in, is that right, uh?
Uh, Mr. Chair, it's just the project.
No, no, uh, I thought it was something more dire than that, I don't think they have that as well, so, okay, uh, all right, any discussion, uh, Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Uh, we beat this one to death pretty good, uh, you know, publicly, they, they've done anything, uh, possible. And like I said, they answered the questions that are, I don't know, open house, really, really well, for the kind of people, they all went away, uh, uh, very happy, so. Um, I have no issues, do we need to move it, or is to, just approve it?
I could, we could, be before we go to moving it that way, uh, it, the, I, the CBF matters to me, like, and, and I think, instead of, if that can, is it included, is that letter included that, that Jonathan spoke to? With, with the municipal support notice, so.
Chair, no, there's, we, we, this, uh, this is the wording that I guess all requires, you know, um, and, we, we got it.
So I think, so Jonathan indicated his will, his will to, to include that, so if, if that will is there, you know, he expressed that during his delegation, then, then could we add that to, to, to the list, and, um, happy to put my support behind it with that, but, and I'd like that included if possible. Yeah, no, um, I guess, can introduce you a little bit, like, was that the passing discussion you were gonna have, uh, Jonathan, is that correct?
Yes, well, we can do, uh, maybe I can work on the language to add to that. They don't say that. It's a, uh, doesn't mean go both ways, from our side view, and, uh, we know it's a document, and uh, I can share that, uh, so that language to, to, when we, uh, for, anyhow.
Okay, wait, thank you very much, yeah, all right. Uh, Council Martell, do you have anything to add?
I do not, I'm fully willing to support this, uh, honestly, I still question a business model where one buys back their own product at a, at a premium, I don't see how that's sustainable, but I am totally behind supporting this.
Yeah, well, you know, and it's funny, uh, Kansas Martell, I had the same thoughts myself, and let's say, you know, we've been talking for years about how we, uh, you know, we, we, when we have too much capacity, we sell it back in New York, and then we buy it back essentially for, you know, I, I heard, I don't know the exact numbers, but I've heard twice to ten times as much, I don't know the number, but it's, it's an expensive proposition, so, might as well save a bunch of it in the plan, so, that's, uh, that's, uh, um.
Certainly, certainly looking fly down at the boneyard.
Yeah, that's right, exactly. All right, uh, perfect, okay, so, uh, with, with no other questions, then, um, do we want to have motion then to, uh, uh, bring this on to, uh, to council, do we even need that at this point, I think we just bring it along, can't we?
Mr. Chair, you're more than able to make a motion just to be thoughtful in council, you're a house draft, uh, will be included to the CBF and consult with, uh, John, so between that and staff, when it's more protected.
And that'll come back to twenty seven, okay, so, good. It'll be dealt with at the twenty seventh, though, so that we have, yes, if we're ready to support, he has that support, we can move, move along? Yeah, okay. The resolution or no resolution? Sound like we need one?
Mr. Chair, and, I think, the committee, we want to have that made a motion for James' support to be brought forward.
Yeah, I think.
Draft motion be brought forward, council with additional information be brought, to be included.
Yeah, and I think I'll support exactly what you just said, so I'll move, I'll move what, what the clerk just, just said, because I think it's important that, that we show our will, and that we show our support, and that we want to continue to work with the providers to move important infrastructure and energy projects along, so, that's as important as, as, you know. Perfect, so I have a mover in, in the mayor, seconded by the deputy mayor, all in favor? Okay, perfect, we'll see that on the fourth and seventh. All right, um, moving on to six A, number four, um, that's a discussion on easement request over township property in February of six oh eight, Canada Law Number Two. But we knew we'd see it again as well. All right, uh, I don't think we need to get introduced to this one again, I think we've got all the preamble, so, uh, uh, just don't put it up for discussion then, at this point, um, so, uh, Council Martell, do you have any, uh, uh, comments you wanna talk to at this point?
I do not, thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Uh, no, I just, uh, to Mr. Annable, I am supporting your proposal, go get it, and do we need a motion, or no?
Mr. Chair, no, I don't think there's, um, an expectation of a motion, just especially where they have, you know, when you're seeing, um, if there's support uh, for, in this, if, if there's only by law, I mean, um, would be a group, although, I think there's others, some questions on page ninety, that would be, uh, considered, uh, as part of this discussion, um. Yeah, because it would be helpful in the design.
Right, and the, the committee discussions, they, I'll, I'll see the questions that, that we could consider, as if the effort were successful in obtaining a zoning bylaw amendment to address areas such as noncompliance, that proposal, would committee support the use of the road allowance? Um, you know, and we've talked about that, if there's any discussion on that, please, uh, jump in? I don't have a problem, both sides. I, I would, I would, I don't, I don't, but I would like I would like to know would like to know what there's, like, what we think, because I mean, with Lockwood, like, am I allowed to say those, am I allowed to say? Lockwood owns the subdivision, so I'm allowed to say it, right? There's an impact, potential impact, by losing sorry, I'm fuzzy all of a sudden. Um, there's a potential impact to, to losing that road allowance from an emergency standpoint. If we, if we allow it to be full full parking, and there isn't a way for Lockwood to work out another access point to the other to the park, I just don't want to say yes to allowing this to be a full parking lot that we can't access with emergency vehicles. And Lockwood have no possible way of ever developing the back half of Meadowland subdivision. I just hate this decision to do this, to, to prevent and landlock them to, to ever be able to develop, and, I mean, I'd like to, it's not covered anywhere in here, and I'd like to know that that's not gonna happen before I say yes, I'm, you know, I've spoken to it, I'm a hundred percent supportive of it, but you know, it is our lingue now, and if we need to access it, we can, so.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I think those are very considerations for design, that we can, for that, through the site building process, um.
Yeah, and, and I know, I mean, I know the, the, you know, the designer as well, and I know the flexibility that Dave brings to the table with, um, his willingness to, to adapt to, to whatever the need is, so, and I know he's willing to do that, so, so a hundred percent supportive, I just want to make sure that we don't don't lose what we need, we may need to be able to develop the rest of that, because, I mean, if we make that decision and renders Corey's project useless, or not being able to develop it at all, that's, that's wrong.
But we can't commit there anyways.
Uh, oh, I see, you're saying.
Because of the apartment, I don't, we own the apartment. We own that street, how does it get to the street, because you can't get to the, to the railroad. So I'm not sure where you're going with that.
I'm not talking about developing it as a useful, or, or. I'm not talking about developing it as a useful, or what I'm talking about if we don't develop it as a useful, we remove the emergency egress as a condition of the planned subdivision. Is the condition the emergency exit through Gill Street was a condition that we as a council, the last council, put on that subdivision, right, Gill Street, right, right, you can't develop because of that. Right now. So if the only option for development is to remove that at some point, that that may happen. Otherwise, we don't have the ability to do that, and the only, we've already seen through emergency exer- exercise, that the only way to get in and out of this place would be through that access point. I hope that that never comes to that, and we actually are able to access through Gill, but I don't want this decision to to limit us, you know, there's no, no possibility.
I think the solution would be the problem of the use in the uh of the easement land use agreement made. But the real end, as I spoke to earlier, shifting that sixteen lane way through, um if it ever did, um where those men were full time use. We can real line the partners to get there. And that's probably a secondary easement for EDR, that the township can then have your path traveled and ready to travel.
Yeah, that's the potential flexibility.
I think that's.
I never, we won't get to that point, but I just don't wanna. Limiting Corey's possibility for development, I mean, it may come, well, I know, I, but it may come to the removal of that. Push that forward, so.
We'll just put a subblock if you want us to have that part.
Your delegation is over. Okay. Uh now, I just, I think I have to express. Yeah. Uh, Council Martell, do you have any on that, uh that one comment about uh supporting these for the road allowance? Okay. Uh then the other questions, I guess, were, uh it's noted that the site plan proposes uh that the use of both sides of the road of their allowance. What portion of the allowance would would the committee be supportive of, and have that conversation, it's very similar to the the first question, I think we talked about that. Uh and uh the request indicated that the land will be used for parking, amenity area and an area for garbage, or specific units, not supported, I don't think that answers all. So um those two uses of garbage and parking allowed are are the human domain, is that the question?
Yeah.
Okay. You were probably asking.
Well, we, Mr. Chair, we get, um, we even agree it can be written so that our allowance can happen on our, on the. Um if there's there's here infrastructure, I don't think there, so it will be written so that if you needed to access that infrastructure, but. We probably aren't going to be responsible for repaving the road, we can be reinstating it, we've had conversations, we have to about this as well. Um, uh the ways to school, we look at the under standing to be movable, we need access underneath uh there, so. There's just consideration, we may, that we still access that underground infrastructure, and as you mentioned before, um we may just come out really deep as well, so we spoke about those to the. Um residential use, um so just wanted to hear your thoughts on are there these that we're supportive of or not supportive of, um just, yeah.
Yep, yeah, sounds good, all right, so any comments while you're ready? Speaker there, you're good?
Yeah.
Council Martell, you okay? No questions, okay? Let's be there. All right, so, uh I guess uh you've got a few um from from council at this point, so, all right, first right from the committee at this point, sorry. Uh, okay, great, um I think you had a good discussion there, and uh and I appreciate you bringing this point to us, and uh, you know, I think uh. I can probably speak for all of us to say we're excited to see some uh, uh you know, a a concept that brings more houses into the area, more residents into the area, and uh. Uh and then, uh, you know, uh, we'd love to work with you, and hopefully we have a uh, a good relationship, a good, a good working relationship, where we're able to solve some of these. Small issues we've kind of talked through, so thank you very much, get it. All right, okay, so moving then on to uh uh six A five, which is action implementation of the official plan. Consent policies, hydrological assessment and terrain analysis. And this is on uh. See it, yeah. Uh this is on page uh ninety eight of one thirteen, is where it starts off, uh, you know, as far as. All right, why don't you bring that side?
Thank you, right there, so, uh, just to draw the draft amendment, this is the special media council on October the. Sacked scheduled, it will announce meeting in the Saturday public meeting for November twenty, so that's coming soon. During the review process, you might recall, our planners recommended additional amendments, which are built in support of it. For race or thing, and according to the policy statement, and uh, and these be by four, be by five, five months. Uh committee has asked the private for hydrogeological assessment and terrain analysis, be done in separate policy rather than within the official plan. Um I did include the bill warning that was enforced by committee on sections uh one of the one of the official plan, I remember there's somewhere other uh. Amendments made that was part of this, but I thought that would be um relevant to reference here, um. So for committee's consideration, the draft provision is attached that will provide guidance for when a high water processing and terrain analysis would be considered a reasonable condition for a separate application. Um, so in summary, and that draft was mentioned in attachment support on the one on one. So the dialogue is that um the study can be scoped, meaning the amount of work can be scaled with the development that's proposed. The study will be required when the lot is all three of these undeveloped, requires private or partial individual onsite servicing, and is under one hectare. Um the study will also be required when the lot is within an area that has a higher risk of or quality or quantity impact, so. That's for the areas, but within an uh influence area of a waste disposal site, um or in other areas of immediate uh sensitive to water quality function. Um, the study must be prepared by a qualified professional and in accordance with ministry guidelines. And where requirements are provided through the report, we need the internal community development agreement. These agreements are registered on title and available for future homeowners. So if the tax resolution is by council, it could be included with the official plan, and the application to the tax. That would help demonstrate the performance of the management of all gaming and any sequence of D back theory by law. Um, the policy education, the PPS prevents individual onsite sewage and water servicing. Um women is for private female services available, provided that site conditions are given over the law for provision of services to mitigate impacts. Um, the definition in the PPS for negative impact, with this policy, the negative impact should be assessed through environmental studies, including hydrogeological or water quality. Impact assessment and for. So I also have the G T V report, um, we had a hydrogeologist that was also once a time, but not new information, but also thought it was important and I will. So, that, all things, or draft resolution, the hydrogeology.
All right. Thank you very much. Let the fun begin. What else? Oh, no, thanks. Okay, um, all right, so bullet point two, the study would be requi- the study would be required when the lot is. Undeveloped, requires private or partial, individual onsite servicing is under one he- hectare, so every single property. That's between point four and one hectare needs a hydrogeology study.
It's my job. And it's your private.
Which is, which is a way of slipping away from, um maybe required, we we ask for the words maybe required to be to be put in. And the bullet point two ensures that it's put in. And I don't like that.
Mr. Chair, I thought that was the goal, maybe I missed it, I thought that in reading that that was decided that the strong language shall be required. Remove from the mission plan and not be um outlining to the government, obviously.
But but the strong language is still there, because it says it would be, the study would be required. It doesn't say that it may be required, it says that it would be required. So the whole intention was to lessen the requirement and and only do it when when we felt. The situations outside of that lot size required it to be done. That's where the original may be required, part, I thought that that's. I thought we had already settled on this, this seems like we we changed the wording to May, but then, but then later on, we're we're saying that. Would it would be required, not may be required.
I felt like we were hurt, um. Uh, I thought we had to be directed by not having strong language in the initial plan, and I actually have direction speed, and we get that policy. Um, Mr. Chair, I'm not sure how we can meet the provincial guideline without having bad language in, um for. Uh, politics.
So if I can again, so I've read, again, I'm gonna go back to Rio Lakes, it's the one I always go back, I've read every part of Rio Lakes. Official plan, it's approved, it's the most, the latest approval of any official plan. Written, written by their enhanced planners, and it was approved of the United Counties, and it works. The only reference to a hydrogeology study in there is that they may require it, not that one would be required, not that one has to be required. And it actually even states that they'll approve lots smaller than point four. But only the ones smaller than point four would require.
Mr. Chair, um Rio Lakes number seven, in the vision policy, what's maybe required um for lots? I believe it's actually point eight, as long as the average is um one.
That that's not what it actually says, and I've got it up now, it's not actually what it says, it it says anything smaller than would, point four would be required. But the larger than that may be required, and it's under their staff's terms, like whether or not they do that, and it's per. That that's in their official plan, you mean? Yeah, yeah. Right, but the, but the CDC was putting it, there's another document they said on top of that, that's. Guiding to.
We need to get our township grant, should be part of year twenty eight. I think that's the scroll down, and the township is, is. Uh, no, they're not coming. Um, notice I can provide that. But I think it will be where earlier.
Mm-hmm. Well, but I think, if I can cut it off for a sec, I I I think that we get that Nova Tech doesn't want us to. To do, or that they doesn't want to support us in the way that we wish to move forward, I I understand where they're coming from. What I'm trying to do is say that there is documentation that the United Counties, who is our approval body, has already brought forward and approved. And we're trying to base what we're doing off of, off of what they're, they seem to be the one that has the most flexibility. In this, and it puts, you know, us at a competitive disadvantage, and and I understand where where Steve and and Jordan are coming from, they're doing their job, and I. And I get that that's part of of their job, we just, we just want to try to keep it as most flexible as we can. Sounds like wings, boy. Um. Know that it's all. Or I want to try to keep as much flexibility in in this, that was the whole idea of of trying to break it down. I don't want to lose that flexibility.
It's a great, it's a really good, it's a good point, I think. The government, the board might, which will be the majority of the maximum, probably not. You know, it'd be a lot, and the one that's been tried, visited and banned, it's a kind of thing, and when you are free, you can be the one that makes this situation, so we don't worry about it, so it's a good quality. And why do we want this for the law, and it's the same, because we can post it on. They allow you to lost processing, community, probably, for any bone, security. So it's same language arts for assessment, and we don't need to have any fancy stuff, right? Policy, like a fire resolution. Kind of into what we have. Proposed, um, that would, uh, most of the data one could be required.
I'm gonna do, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read the entire, look at part of that again, but. Okay. Uh, Council Martell, you still there, I think we had been a year. Came back on. Let's see, I don't know if you're there or not. Okay, uh anyways, uh Deputy, Mr. Deputy Mayor, if you have any comments?
Yeah, no, I I don't want to even do it, because it's in there, uh I like to read, may. When we had services that we may. Be required to demonstrate the law, can react in service for long term. Um, and then the good balance say we have to, it's defeating what I, what I want.
Okay, so just, and and I know it's not supposed to be debated, and I apologize, but if we go to page one oh one A. Of theirs, and and we read one oh one A, how does that, how does that apply to? Hold on, you take a, just.
Uh, Mr. Chair, so, I get, I'm not, so I can do my best to. If you have, right, I can read the second, third, fourth, I think. One oh one, uh, which one of one, um. A is talking about situations. What may be required or situations where a lot size of, you know, three or forty four hectares, um. I guess what would be required if there was a lot size of less than two or four. It's a lot of the township man that there may be situations where a lot could be smaller, but you might need to do some, how to do. Thing analysis to support that, um, but if you look at the consent policies on page one oh three. It's telling you that the lot is less than two acres that.
I don't think we have a problem with the word may, I think we have a problem with shall, they don't. Like would be required. Just that one word, maybe required, you're looking for, right, because this one doesn't, it just says that that they're gonna have to do a wellness, which we have to do anyway. And and that. There, that they may require it, if this, if the circumstances apply, but it doesn't say they would be required. We're gonna get stuck in these words, but they're gonna matter a lot, because, because if somebody comes in with one that's point six and wants to do it, and and. Our says would be required, then they have to do a hydrogeology study. If there's no need for them to do a hydrogeology study on a point six piece of property, why would we require them to do it? That's, and if it says may, then if you look at it and say there's no reason to do that, as long as you have a well test that shows that you can adequately supply yourself with water. Why would we add another piece of a layer of red tape for them to have to go? I think that's the whole crutch of what we've been, what we've been trying to to do. So is it, there's multiple. Levels of a hundred to study, you're correct, but there's, there's a, call it an assessment, and then there's a broader one, is that not how I have understood this all?
Uh, I think in general, like we we sculpt to the level of the mountain, so whether or not they had to, um. Drill a lot long, maybe there are five wells on the site to test the water, and they get these depends on what the size and. I just, um, just the the draft resolution, it don't need to have very strong language, because it's definitely a report, and now I'm going to implement it, but the. Resolution says, um, I'm on one, two, three, four, five paragraphs down, and that council directs that, and follows.
Uh, sorry, what page would that be?
Uh, page one on one, draft, draft. Um, and that council directs that, and follows circumstances, the scope train houses. And or hydrogeological report demonstrated that the whole of the lot have access, upon a very well, well, is a reasonable condition of setting approved, under following circumstances. Suppose that doesn't say that we have to request it every time, it would be helpful, helpful to have council knowledge that in those circumstances, it's a reasonable, um, condition.
In in those severance, um. No severance instances, will they come before this committee? Like, is that staff's gonna recommend, you'll recommend that a hydrogeology study be done? We don't have to accept that as a condition of severance, though, right? So so ultimately, if we said yes to what's there, and you brought it to us, and we felt differently than what the staff recommendation was, we could ask to have it removed?
Chair? Chair. Uh, yes, the, the. Issue we might come across there is that normally these studies are, um, applications, mission requirements, so they. If the applicant felt that it was an unreasonable request. They would, um. Uh, make the application, have it accepted, or they, they could make the donation.
And so do we know what the average cost would be of a hydro G study? Like, do we, like, if we're making this part of of every possible law that that goes from one acre. Down to, or from, excuse me, from one hectare down to one acre, like point four, if it becomes. Because that's ultimately what this is doing. Is, if they have to, and you recommend it, then they have to do it before we have a see it, whether we would have wanted it or not. So, so how much are we adding to the cost of having a smaller lot? That's what I'd like to know, like, is it five hundred dollars, is it ten thousand dollars, like, I don't know. That's a concern, and excluding the well, obviously, because that would be required regardless of.
We did ask David to do this question, and the answer was that it depends on a lot of factors, so. The range is really quite large, I believe they said it was between two and six, but it also appears as a teen house.
So, so.
It depends on so many factors, not to grow a lot, and as the chair had mentioned, that that does add to value of the property, because the well is. Now, it wasn't developed before, and we have the, um, the well is. So, it's, um. It's been a very, a lot depending on the circumstances.
The guarantee we're adding into. Guaranteeing we're adding to to be able to, to get relating to be to have a small lot, lot size, we're adding two thousand at a minimum. To a severance. Because if it's one hectare, they don't have to get the.
Okay, um. Yeah, there's no, I was trying to figure out if there's some sort of a. A compromise position that could be had here for some sort of a, you know.
There is.
Reasonable, well. A reasonable, um, analysis tool to say whether, you know, would need it or not. You know, but I just.
Through this, of us, you know, we didn't want that.
I get that, I get that, and and I'm, I'm all in favor of the.
Area, we wanna maybe use. Now we don't, and we have to. We didn't want that in the first place, we talked about it.
And and we, and I'm still saying. We fight, we want to win any, any lots as cheaply as possible, I just, you know, I I kept coming back to what I said with, you know, day one. You know, I'm in favor of it, but how do I, how do we make sure that if we, you know, if there's at all any risk, we have some sort of assessment tool? Um, which is what I was hoping to see, or the part of this document as well would be an assessment to say, you know, um, you know, there's some conditions where, you know, it's not necessarily required. And I don't know if we have a way to do that, though, I think that's, that's the conversation, but. You know, I'd love to see some conditions where it may have to be required because, you know, no other properties in the area, or things like that, but that's not going to work, right? I don't know, but I mean, uh. Uh, do we wanna continue to talk on this, do we wanna, I mean, I think we're probably, I think maybe of three right now, I believe Joe is not, Joe is not with us anymore. Uh, if you guys wanna propose a change, um, you know, um.
I, 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 I'm not voting on that. I'm only one.
Did you wanna put some words?
By not voting on it, though, just delays. And it doesn't change it, so if we wanna change it, we need to change it, otherwise, we're gonna be kicking and kicking and kicking and kicking.
We're really kicking and kicking.
I know, I know, but and I get your frustration, I understand that, but kicking it again isn't really gonna solve that, right? If we're gonna solve it, take what you want taken out of it and move it. Then we can have a full discussion, council. When it, when it gets there, and if it gets turned down because we are being too aggressive, then it gets turned back down, and it comes back to us again, and we, we have to put something else in it.
Did you propose those committed, or?
I don't know where to, I don't know where to actually start to remove it, so. So to the development coordinator, like. The way that the bylaw is written, you don't believe. That the, the background information really applies. Is that? Is that the way that he said it? Right?
Um, sorry, but in the, um, it makes kind summary of the resolution. To commence, I, I guess to give a summary, I probably, probably with a final resolution, but I. I can hear the discussion now, I'd rather you look at the draft resolution and.
So.
Change the wording there.
Okay, so, so correct me if I'm wrong here, the only part that goes in the official plan is the part that says may. Right? Like, is the in summary part, part of what's going in, it's not, right, it it ends at the, at the word constraints, am I correct?
Correct, so that, that section, that is being amended. That adds a.
It ends at the word constraints.
So the red was being added, the straight over was being taken away, and that's where we changed it to the word, um. May.
Right, so you're, so you're in the summary part, right, is the part that we have the issue. It's not, it's not the, the way that the official plan part is written, I don't think, because it says may be required.
Correct, it is our endorsed that, uh, official plan, and that is during that, I'm meeting on Italian, and that's what's gonna form part of our application, to move.
Think where we're struggling moving this forward. Is that in your summary portion, you're saying it would be required.
The summary is a summary of the hydrological assessment draft resolution that's on page one oh one. So perhaps maybe instead of reading that summary, um. Let me know what you would like to change for that round of decision.
It was, you know. In the, where it says, and that council directs, in that paragraph there. You know, if we were to put something in there that gave staff discretion. Um, is that reasonable?
Do we not care on this, on the second one, too, as where is provincial policy statement provides a negative impact should be assessed, could we say may be assessed?
I, I, well, I think it says should be assessed, doesn't it in the PBS?
Can we change that?
Well, we can't pass the PBS.
Pardon?
We, we can't change the PBS, you can take that section out of your resolution, but.
But can, can we just change that word, should be, could we maybe assess? Or is that, is that part of the provincial policy statement?
Yeah, and I mean, I'm thinking the answer might lie somewhere in the end, that statement. And, uh. It's almost like there's a system, I think we talked about, the mayor talked about as well, is that, you know, and and should we say, should, should, you know, should staff, you know, say, we need to do a hydro G study? Um, is there, is there a mechanism for them to, you know, uh, can we get the. Second to figure that, yes, if that a community or council, right, that's, that's what the mayor was highlighting, alluding to there. I don't know if there's any way we can word around this one, but I'm not sure there is. Got any ideas around there, buddy?
So, so the crux of everything is, and that council directs, right? Under the following circumstances. That we have to do a spoke train analysis, no matter what, and a hydro G, no matter what, if the lot size is going to be less. Than one hectare. But that. That is. And that, and that's what it says this. But if we go back to our official plan. It says may. There it says, it has to, it's a requirement that, that we do. Am I wrong in thinking that? I'm asking, that's a question to staff.
But the. That official plan is amended. Says that. Um, the highest biological standard thing was maybe required. And that resolutions, and that policy would say would be required, um. Only the lot undeveloped. Requires specific required synthesis.
Right, and if, if we don't, it's a different limit than the official plan was.
It, I mean, I get, I get that the word may appeases us in, in there, but that, that paragraph doesn't. Because it says, and that council directs that under the following circumstances, a spoke training analysis and hydro G. Report demonstrating that it will not have adverse impact, so, uh, and and that third condition is that it's less than one, than one hectare. There's no may in that.
If it were less than one hectare, it's already got, it would be required, it were less than one hectare, but if I'm still servicing.
We need to be all three of these things to be required? Maybe we should put that in there. So if it's a brand new lot. It, it's going to be world, it's gonna require a well. And it's less than one, or it's less than two point four seven acres, we're saying now. That it has to have. A terrain analysis and a hydro G.
Can we take it that, uh, and where as a provincial policy statement provides a negative impact, should be assessed through environmental studies, including the hydrological or if all the impact. Can we take that right now?
So.
Remove it?
I, I want to do one of the things.
I mean, the provincial policy statement still doesn't exist regardless of when leaving here.
If you were in New, so we are probably not, but there's a call, David. So those where I thought this were provided to us, the base, or back.
So when we remove that, it's still.
The warehouse is certified, PBS, warehouse is certified, it's, it's, they're, they're not the issue, the, the issue is the offer, right? That's, that's the issue, it's, it's the wording of that, of that, of that paragraph that I'm talking about, that's the issue. And I mean, if, if, and further down, I mean.
Wouldn't a lot.
The, the problem that I started with is, if we decide to make this, uh, this, I mean, I may instead of a, a should or need to have all three conditions, you know, all three conditions didn't require it. What's the? The scientific or the procedural process that you follow, because it, it, it can't be, you know, uh. I mean, I say can't be at the discretion of staff, I don't wanna put staff in the position to make it at the discretion of staff, there's gotta be a sign. I think I'm gonna say we are not gonna be on the side of this one tonight, so we'll, uh, I'd like to push it off.
So we're gonna kick it again.
Well, unless you guys wanna come up with some wording there, I don't know what we do. We can't sit here all day and talk about the same sentence and not do anything about it.
I, I. I mean, I just. You know, when I saw, I was very happy in any, uh. In, in the purpose of it, you know, I put it in the official plan, like. Maybe. And then you read down. And then when you read to the official plan, it falls right back in there, we have to do it. I don't understand why we have to do every one. It bugs me.
Like I said, I, I think there's maybe conditions where it wouldn't need to be done, but I'm not sure what they look like, and, you know, if you can, if you can figure those out. You know, like, if, 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 if they're splitting off a second property, they did, they did a split, you know. Two or three years ago, I don't know why they do another hydrologic study, because they already wound up one of the last. Ten fifteen years, and there's no other developments that happen, right, so, or, incident, not significant development, but I'm not an expert on water.
I think, I don't think we need about that, I think, fair, what, what I will agree with you on is that, I don't think. Between the three of us, we're gonna be able to wordsmith. The operative portion of this, and then, and therefore be it resolved. I don't think it's going to get resolved, and I don't think that we.
Implement under the official.
We're not, we're not the ones that should write this, right, and I, and I don't think. And I don't think that that says what we want it to say. And, and I think where we're struggling is, is giving the direction to, to staff to, to get it to say what we want to say. And, and I think if we go away, I think that it's pretty, I think it's pretty clear that this isn't it, um. But I think if we. Maybe there's a, a mechanism where we can, where we can work on this during the next month, so that we can get it to say what we, ultimately, what we needed to say, or what we. What we wanna put forward, to see if we'll get approved and say. Is there a way that we can do that?
So, let me just outline the conditions we're talking about, we'd like it to. You know, essentially, not always, which seemingly is. Be a, you know, anything less than one hectare. Needs a hydrological stuff.
And, and, yeah, synergy analysis, right, only, so we're looking for something that doesn't automatically, essentially automatically necessitate that.
I'm also looking for something, at least on my end, and I don't know if I have the support of the rest of council, but I'd like to see some sort of a, uh. Uh, a procedural outline. Uh, that describes the process you would go through to determine whether or not they need one or not, you want, based on those conditions to talk, but. Is there anything else that I missed to, to be, like, are you asking for some specific examples of why one would be?
And, well, I think it's a, like I said, there's, there's gonna be conditions where it's not needed, essentially, right, like, you know, I mean, uh. Uh, you know, I wanna.
Sometimes it's just obvious, right?
Why it would be, not why it's not. I would, I would look at it from a different angle. We're asking for it to not be, not be required, so for me, I would wanna know an instance and why it's. What, what exactly makes it so that it, that it has to be so a terrain analysis, I get the highway too. Especially when those lots go down to the river, and the, the banks may not be stable, and that sort of stuff, when you're allowing a smaller lot size, that, that it makes sense, hundred percent. But a field that's been there for a hundred years, that is just a small lot, a one acre lot, one acre lot's a big lot, it's not a little lot, let's be real.
It's high and dry, I just don't.
There's lots of instances that you don't need.
Also, to that point, you know, and I guess over the fact of the discussion, I think we'll have to move this along, like I said. But, you know, um, the only condition where it happens is if it beats all three of these conditions that are here, essentially. Otherwise, if it doesn't beat all three of these, then it doesn't mean a hydro G study, that's what I'm saying. But, you know, that, that basically means if it is, if it's, if it's developed, if it's undeveloped, in other words, if there's no other structure on there that already has, well, essentially.
You need it.
You need it, um, if there's a, uh. Uh, because our purpose services the well, you need it, but we're talking about, we're talking about real property, so. Most, if not all.
Two and a half acres and so on.
And less than two and a half acres, when we were trying to go to one acre, right, so, so the problem is, it's, you know. All of these, you know, are there, and in many cases, all of them are gonna be the conditions we're talking about, so. Anyways, I, you know, I don't know if that's given you enough to talk, you know, and see if you can figure a little bit of that out, um, with, with the plan, or I see, but I, you know.
Give it one more, let's just have it on for an item, maybe even just the way that it is now.
So the one more, luckily, I was gonna get to, uh, this is the last CDC meeting until February, so we'd have to do it.
So, if, if the chair will indulge, then, then we can do it, and then.
So. The lot, this is the last, maybe?
February, yeah, does that one in December?
No, not, 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 what in January, right? Or December, January.
Well, because December is a shorter month for us, we can take the C D C memory, we can be.
Well, okay, well, we can still. Okay, I I'll go, I, we kicked the can this much.
Let's get it once, watch one more month. The third, we have.
Sure, he's first administration opinion, that I don't have to drop the meat, the address. Here, we do not have our. Meeting, all meetings in December, January, we're on. We don't like.
Yeah, so I don't appreciate that, I just, yeah, yeah.
So let's keep taking your administration.
In December.
Of the course. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, well. Let's give, let's give direction.
Well, let's give direction, like I think I just gave the direction, talked about, uh. Uh, we need some conditions that it's not always, we're fair with the one one hectare below, essentially, these conditions are met. Uh, and like I said, um, you know, my opinion anyways, I, you know, we want to put them separately. Uh, one direction would be that, so. Because I don't know if you're all gonna agree with my procedural. Decision treatment process, but I do think we need something. So that it's not just, um, you know. At the at the mood of somebody.
I just wanna know why, that's all. Why do we need? Why do we?
An example of why we need it, not why we don't need it.
Yeah. That's all I want.
We're gonna add it as a condition, I wanna know exactly what the parameter is, not when we're gonna take it off. So procedure. That. Needs. Two needing. Hydrogy and terrain assessment. Okay. I mean, that's not. Guess what you work with there? Sorry, but I'm sorry, to the, uh, the C D C, is that, do you have enough information to try and put something on there?
Hi, uh, sure, my apologies, my apologies.
Okay, perfect, okay. Uh, okay, so I'm gonna move this on, this was a, uh. Uh, this was an act, so I guess I need an action to defer this.
We've only had a meeting now, so we don't have to put people's.
It's not moved and it's not second. Not moved and not second. Okay, so then we'll, uh, we'll go on to that one then. Uh, there is no. Work in economic development section, there is a plain recreation that we have, uh, the very nations, um. Recreation coordinator here to discuss the, uh, update and upcoming events, so, uh, very, very chill.
Okay. This year, I've asked about the sea creation, if you got from, um, community center on my state. I'm fairly hopeful that the amount of sense that it's going to create association and I'm not a specific. All the consideration to treat and have brought about to the body. There's some six K R S part, the last one, which is the first of the session of the. The second, the second, we have more than thirty. The first option for the out of Christmas, which is. That is partly aiming. So, having to the current way of life. The second session is. Um, on the subject, I'm grateful you person, three hour meeting, regarding after weeks, so I'm. To show the fallings. Uh, second of the game, it's. For the series and our private standard routine. After we are assembled and Sunday, the service is at the. Very well, this year, we will develop both sets of community. All the partnership programs events are shared in the message of technique, you have it and event work. And organized, which have opportunities to allow.
That's, that's good, thank you very much. So the, uh, the comments as well, um. Yeah, to. The staff, and it's it's not so much a, um. A programming question. It's more an organizational, uh, question, um. Rachel, uh. And to the coordinator, sorry, I know you attended the trunk retreats, both in Johnstown and in in Cardinal, and they were. They were well attended, and I thank you for giving a soccer ball for my son, um. The, my question is. Isn't necessarily to you, it's to staff in general. Um, when it comes to the. To community groups and community not for profits, I'm assuming these are both not for profits. Is there? Is there an accountability or financial accountability, like? We call, Sarah collects money, I'm assuming, to do different projects in the community. Do we? Do they? Are they required to account to anyone as a not for profit? How they, how they utilize the funds that they collect? Does that make sense? My wording that? Is there any accountability network, like if if they raise a thousand dollars at a R A F A? Do they have to account for the thousand dollars that they that they raise? Is there, is there anyone that monitors? Do we monitor? Do the C R A monitor them? Like, how do they get monitored? To keep their, I'm sorry.
Sure.
Go on.
The township, particularly from between the law and places, and there's a bunch of houses, there's a R A F A, it's probably not public for. Uh, for me. They have to find a lot of missing, and. I don't know a lot of the legal process, but there would be a. To. Um, as for their. Eighteen for a year, that's not probably, um. It requires more than maybe we can hold maybe every year. And there are some important departments to, um. Um, um, you know, it's just.
Yeah, and, you know.
It's not.
But they operate within our township, and I know I know members of of committee sit on this here, and I'm just. I'm I'm not understand, like, I mean, one of the biggest job that we do at this council table is. You know, is finance, is finance, right? I mean, that's. And overseeing how how we spend. How we spend, and I. I've never seen any accountability when it comes to the groups that represent us in. In the township or that that offers.
I don't think you need to unless they're coming forward and asking for money from us. In other words, like the optimism club, they they run.
So it's none of our.
Nonprofit. Right, uh, next Columbus, we don't come to you. And give you a monthly statement, oh, it's awesome. I've been working hard, you know. I I know, I mean, I think the only time you want it is if, well, like, uh, the bluegrass festival. Sure, imagine they came to you and say, hey, I want three grand, oh, what did you last, uh? I don't know, we'll find if they've been on or up here to the next.
Right.
And no accountability, so that.
And we have that accountability network because they file papers with you, right?
They have to.
Sorry, to the clerk.
There. Um, just have all the lawyer licensing, yes, we have some of the movies, um, our. Taxler. Monitors and agents, uh, lawyers, they think there is an account of the cost that we have. They have to account for the revenue that is brought in. Um, and what it's being used for, and it comes these for what they are determining. It can be changed midway through the process that's always in our priority, this is our priority, you know, it's what. What you apply for, that's definitely. You ask for.
Okay.
Um. As for different mechanisms, I've those next one with our community donation program, a couple of years before. That's a eight fifty valuation form for the financial contributions. All, uh, organizations that use. For free from the township. Have to submit a financial report to itself or I review it, making sure that they're going by what you gave it for. And whether you allow for a year. Uh, they're helping you. Um, as for here with the point, we don't have certain thing to report to the township on, from the days. Uh, the revenue for other projects they do, whether it's counted at the full, impact. Your organization, if there's. Of their money, there is. I don't know that we do less, you know, those forms of.
No, but we're also, we're we're not, yeah, and and we're not the ones that issue the not for profit status, I believe that's probably through C R A, through the federal code, and it's. So the responsibility is when they file their taxes, they do so in a way that justifies that, and, uh. You know, I don't think we're in a position to need to ask them that, I mean, if they continue to. Uh, pass the screening they got at the C R A level, I don't. I'm not sure. Sure, and our, so, so our, and to receive a community grant and donation, do you have to be a not for profit?
Good cheer, there, that is ideal, um, there are. They are not a process.
Okay.
Uh, but the preference is, there is an actual section on the.
Sorry, this this turned into, I just thought of something, this turned into something I did not expect it to, I, I, I just was. From, it was just more from an accountability standpoint, you know, there was, uh, thousands of kids, there were a lot of people. Spent a lot of money on on a lot of candy that that went through, there was a lot of dollars generated, a lot of. You know, it it sprung to me, you know, we do barbecues, we do fundraising. Is there an accountability mechanism that we have any part of? The answer is no, ultimately. Uh, other than lotteries and and whatever we give. And community grants and donations and and in kind. Other than that, there's no accountability for any of those those groups, other than their A G M and to the members. Okay, cool. Sorry, I didn't steal that, I I just, I was just, sorry, Rachel, my apologies. Take aside.
Thank you for your report.
Anything else on the report, uh?
Nope, I just thank Rachel for her report.
Yeah, no, I thank for the report and, uh, you know, I mean, there's a lot of events that happened, have happened, and and, uh. You know, I was at the trunk retreat in Cardinal, it was great to see all the kids there, and that. You know, I saw a hundred and forty kids and and they were. They're gone in less than an hour, it was quick as. Yeah, you know, I was having to fold up my trunk, and I was not realizing there was nobody left, it was just in front, so. Good planning on it, and good to see the stuff coming up through through the holidays as well, you know, uh. Free skating, I think those are the ones we want to go down.
I got it down Santa. Santa, you know, I actually sweater.
I know a few Santas, but I'm not sure they. We'll see what happens, so, but thanks again for the report, appreciate it, and, uh, we're good there. All right, so, uh, so thank you very much, moving on to, uh. Uh, number seven, which is the increase in doses of motion, uh, any increase in doses of motion?
No.
Is that anyone?
No.
No, okay, and I have none. Uh, question period, any questions from the, from the, uh. Three people we have in town, right? No, we're good, all right. Uh, all right, we got number nine, which is closed session, there is no closed session tonight. Uh, so, uh, we have number ten for adjournment. I do have a few things to say, so, uh, uh, we did sort of touch on already, but this is in fact the last C D C, uh. Meeting until February, and, uh, I'd like to thank the community members, and I believe I might have actually even wrote down, forgot to mention the fact that, um. Uh, that now that we're in the day, we're gonna be independent tonight, so, um. Uh, we we missed them, and unfortunately, that was. Case, and Councilman Snail was also off, uh. Uh, vacation, and we did have the Council for a while, but he dropped off into, I think, probably. Technical difficulties. Um, but again, thank you for all the work we done in the last year, it's been a been a good first year, I think, as far as the city goes. Uh, we also had so many delegations over the past year, which just shows how much the community's interested and involved. And participating in the events, and then, uh, we'd just like to thank that everyone who came to speak to us about the topics that mattered to them, for them both, so, uh. Uh, we appreciate that, and, um. Uh, and yeah, and we get talks about it, which shows the core party has, uh, I'd like it is, uh, for anything that comes along with C D C oriented, we'll just let it go. Um, uh, for the next, uh. Months, I guess, it's December, January, then February, and return to, uh, to the P C, so on that note, uh, all in favor of adjournments?
I'll have a second.
Right.
Oh, okay.
I can't do anything, so. If you don't second it, this.
Oh, no, I seconded it.
Hold on, no, 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 all right, so, uh, all in favor there?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's, we're done, thank you very much.